Um, I would like to ask you a few questions. I've got Mr. Senator. Hello, I've got five minutes.
Thank you, I'm reviewing her role. I noticed you're approving the minutes of the sending of the council's sanctuary motion. I have questions regarding the openness and transparency of the interactions with interested groups moving forward. Previous council meetings speak to me about community consulting groups should have terms of reference. I am trying to understand the terms of reference and work of previous anti-racism working group and the current agreed role of your anti-racist champion. Western Town Council minutes state that a role profile for the anti-racist champion position should be drawn up ahead of appointment and be approved annually and reported back to full council on an annual basis. Despite my past, this information has not been possible to identify and I find that the process is not readily transparent for the public or potentially for councillors. For example, the most concerning discovery was that the anti-racism group was intended to continue with attendance from the anti-racist champion but will not be part of the formal committee structure reporting to any committee. How can any group use Western Town Council's name without reporting back to this? It also states that the champion's role will be to lead youth groups and organisations to help push forward about council's commitment to anti-racism. We have only found two reports relating to the anti-racist champion, but the content, especially in that training, is clearly lacking. We've been told that Western Town Council does not endorse any critical or ideological perspective within external training, but also told that the training content is not as strong. So how would you know just being promoted in Western Town Council's name? For me, this lack of openness and transparency explains the council sanctuary test of this year. In the minutes being approved today, points four and five note the important work of the appointed race relations champion and their role to enhance good relations between all centres of society with the development of harmonious relations between people of different backgrounds and experiences. Despite this, you will still have clearly and publicly answered questions or concerns raised by council's sanctuary survey and public engagement. The anti-racist champion report states that they met with various minority groups and were having meetings with residents to discuss the net set in unifying our town. When are you going to reach out to the public, as you have done certain residents? The residents association submitted a seven-page report summarising the views of nine hundred and fifty residents that signed the petition and we've been raising since August for public feedback and debate. The lack of public feedback following the council sanctuary motion is causing tension in the community and I think this has in line with the aim of creating some dis equilibrium in the community as stated within the time for change document that I discussed at the last FNG meeting. This anti-racism strategy was developed specifically for residents with stated input from Western Town Council via this anti-racism working group, councillors and officers. And by the way, you still have a very strongly suggested view as this sort of pro dini, pro dini statement really has no place in our society. This equilibrium is defined as a state of imbalance, disruption in a harmonious relationships, structures or norms that usually provide order and predictably that can manage that protest, social struggles or breakdown in cooperation. Why would the council want to be stating this part of the document that proves this equilibrium and these statements are not in our community? The view of the anti-racist champion is clearly not that of the council and does not accept the decision as shown by the new marginal status that he claimed councillors had been swayed by misinformation and misunderstanding. The council's entry process showed that public communication, documentation and relations need to be improved. What is the role of the anti-racist champion and do they represent Western Town Council or any other group? How does there work publicly communities, especially by a council? Until resuscitated discussions with all groups are made more transparent, we do not think that the minimum principles are being upheld and will continue to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, what did you say? I've got five, the council had thoughts and some council more and hesitant. As John Cowson, there's some short bits saying for the fall. Oop. He don't push on with this. Any more interest? Okay, number three is through the evening. It is the town council meeting for power twenty-two or seven, number twenty-five. A person coming?
I propose it. Can I just make a quick, uh, break some preparation? Uh, page four suspended, standing members were suspended, so I get removed, suspended. Uh, top of page five, capitalists missing in health. And page seven, uh, the council requested that municipal workers were saving more represented, yeah, even more. Yes. So I have approached those members, I've got a doc. Uh, sorry, I put it down, I didn't, this may be wrong because I can't actually remember, but I very do remember looking at the minutes and thinking that I wasn't recorded for being present at the last meeting when I was present.
You were definitely there, yeah.
I definitely remember it. Otherwise, it was one of those terrible nightmares that we have, I'm sorry, I'm a man, fool, I'm scared.
You were there.
Well, there's still good. Oh, that's always the case.
I remember, Castle Show.
Everybody. On page sixteen, it says, meeting ended at nineteen oh nine, but that's incorrect. Typical.
Oh, it's a lot, yeah.
It's a long video, absolutely.
I'm happy with all of that, Mike was definitely there, so I think that's reasonable. We will need a second, of course.
You want to say something, please? Hello, James. What was your favorite match? Commanding, getting it gets. No stations. There. All right. These are the house of the condition man. Um, let's say the town bus were very well attended this year. Um, I think they're probably actually bombing, not me. Um, it's sort of pretty unique for the big hometown. Um, then so far, I'm sure it does seem that the hundred days I give. Um, probably a little bit bored. Uh, so now it's, uh, the place is welcome. Uh, although from the youth council, it's not for us. And you should do, um, as carefully as possible, you council, they've asked in advance to attend our meeting, uh, to us believing that too. Uh, and let's welcome an opportunity to speak about the council, thanks a lot. Who's you?
Thank you. Um, me and my staff are less, uh, I love the council and just a bit of vision of all over, but if you don't, we, uh, work with the town council to support young people and work with them to get them suspended. So let's talk a bit about our function and the collection.
So ahead of our upcoming music show, we partly wish students have lots to come us at the college to help on the technical side, the mobile, that option. Um, they get a bit to your classroom setting, help us, they'll all benefit very deeply from that.
It's a short video from the people at our college. Okay. Um, so they are going to be working with our, us, over around further until we have our chance, so they're going to be helping their students doing our work that will be basically, you know, building their service. So recently, we've also seen a large increase in engagement on social media with our face of patients, which we, well, we, a couple of weekends ago, we had just under seven thousand views every one day. So we're quite happy with how that's going to get our, to develop that further. We've also, in our last meeting, we issued our first grant to first, uh, post stats of a thousand pounds to help them fix their markups when you get more accessible to disabled people. We'd like to further work with the town council to issue grants in the future. Um, we're going to go over some of the things that we've been doing recently, but I will save these ones for using. Yeah. For a settling rate, so I'm spacing. So only fifteenth of May, our chat vice chairman attended the meeting and they looked out, they said that it was a great opportunity. They very much have to be involved in issues that are in the future. Then I attended the reset youth awards on the eighteenth of July and that was a great opportunity for us to celebrate young people in our community. Then on the eleventh of August, we were joined by members of group on youth council, which looked smaller and they were looking for advice on how they can grow and do well as youth council. So we met with them at the Y M Z, you know, on Wednesday beach to discuss what we would do. We went to their mansion, fishing sheds for lunch, which was nice. Then we had some of our members attend the quarry opening, which was a fantastic event and it really allows to speak to members of the public and get our voices out there as well. And after that, we hosted an event at the Y M Z, you know, before the carnival to help for young people to meet up, get a hot drink, get a snack before they came to the carnival. So we had a few young people coming with hot chocolates and pop dogs, which was really nice. And then some of our members attended, do you remember, it's very, our chair was on to a layer of and we think it was for under United States to support those who are for dying drugs. And then most recently, we've been, we actually christened our show to support the town council. And we had a really great time there as well. So next, in January, on the twenty-fifth, we're going to be hosting a youth music and town event for young people. So they're going to be joining us in the local theatre and we would really like to see that, obviously. But, um, we're doing that to support off the record myself, which is a local youth charity, youth support and people with mental health. And we really think that we're going to be very difficult, so. If you can send us our word, that'll be, there is a link to my Facebook and local theatre. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you for your due, um, and, 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 and obviously, I mean, I think it's really, uh, the number one youth wars, um, very good answers to try and get involved, support youth now, so they're looking to get new members. So if anyone has contacts with local schools, company bodies, please try and let those local schools and towns get involved. It's a really, uh, real thing and it's, um, it's important for the future of our, of our town shooting, but thank you for your time. Okay. Well, I will, we're secret heads on the youth council meeting held in July, September, October, twenty-five. Just eventually put that in packs. And then we can go on to item six, which is, because, uh, it was a small, some busy important.
Same now.
Oh, yeah, it was on there, yeah.
Hi, what can you hear me? A video in a circle. That shows why they're attempting, I was amazed by that. I don't know, there's a video in the circle, it's amazing. Anyway, I'm sorry. We're, we're, he fills your confidence about this. I'm, I'm good for crying. Not good for crying. Shall we start again? All right. Anyway, um, I'm trying, I'm on day eight of twelve. Uh, so I was working the weekend and I thought, actually, I've already just talked to you and I've got something together that you might hear in my mind, I don't know what to say, so, um, I have my own videos, so. Um, so, uh, just to give you a brief, I mean, the biggest thing, uh, updating rise for us is I have a geographic model. Our model, what's written as a construct really changed, um, to, well, it's gone back actually to what is called a geographic model. So, uh, our foundation, uh, used to be aligned to geographical areas, North Somerset was North Somerset and, and units and resources were aligned to North Somerset. We then changed it a few years ago, but to a director model, which was, you know, there was everyone in response, where all the lines together, our local organisation, force five neighbourhoods, investigations, those are the departments. Um, and I think pretty much unanimously, um, it receives a very positive move to go back to a geographic model and that involves the detailed return. Actually, what that means is, while the land staff in Ainsworth, I think, is out there worrying about, I'm the neighbourhood cop, so what's neighbours doing over in Bath and how we support that? Actually, all of the staff working in North Somerset are aligned to North Somerset and are worrying about North Somerset. Um, there are naturally, when you do a, an organisation of our size and we change the model in any way, even in a positive way, because I really generally think this is, there are teeming problems and network assistance things and stuff. But already, the move is considered to be a really positive thing for North Somerset and I'm sure there are other meetings in other places that are definitely things about there. We have joint meetings with patrol or with investigation, with our intelligence, and it's just about North Somerset and how do we better lead town to respond to the issues, all of our documents are over to North Somerset and and what goes up is Somerset are always a big issue, but, um, it really is a, a, a move that focuses big chunks for our organisation, for our North Somerset, around here. So I don't know, once I have a concept to everybody, uh, and it is thus for us, uh, and now we are all friendly that way, so really positive moves for us. Um, I normally give you feelings as well, some data and I normally have the questions, I'm not saying too much uh, at the time because the questions normally are helpful, but, um, I will, I want to show you the table shares inside. I have been going on for ages, and there'd be rises, uh, in these meetings for, for any who are awake, do you remember who this was? Saying, um, there's always been issues in the way that we record data. We had a big review of it, we were only reporting crime, so that's, the reason it's up is because uh, we've changed the way we record crimes. Um, so we have big rises and we said, we can't say exactly how accurate that is because of these reviews, the life of crime. Now, the, the, the stats I'm going to show you, there are big reductions in crime. Um, and whilst I'd love to go, hey, look at us now, let's, let's all collect our numbers together. Um, actually, there has been a change in the way we record crime, so. Uh, this is North Somerset and I know you're repeating Gancier, but that, which is more likely. This gives you an idea of North Somerset as a whole. You will see lots of green in the sense its colour. Crime is now shotlifting is down by forty-three percent. Yeah. Right. So just to reassure you, I got all of my bosses this morning and I said, look, I'm really worried because these figures look too good, but there's a reason for it. Now, there's been a change in the way you record shoplifting because we were over recording offences, so. Um, if somebody calls, if somebody does a online report and reports eight shoplifting offences, last year it was being recorded because they thought we were on the point had eight shoplifting offences. However, that will now be recorded as one incident, even though there were eight offences in there. So that has had a profound impact on the calling of shoplifting. So you would have thought data would be able to, to work out, but, but there are changes, which, which I've which I was saying before, we, we go into the next one as well. Beyond this, I'll go to Weston here as well, uh, because these are ones, uh, so these are the Western Town beats on the left and the town centre team beats on the right. So if you look for these figures, you'd say that Western Town said the shoplifting is down by sixty-five percent. We absolutely know that is not the case. But I'll show you the stats anyway, just to show you what the system is showing. Um, both groups are the ones in, uh, that's up. Uh, and it's down for the town centre four, uh, in, in Western Town, this is up at nineteen. Um, and everything else is down. Now, for shoplifting, there's a very clear explanation for that, but other events, it does depend on what it is. Um, as towns will record, but some of those will be active reductions, some are dependent on the recording change. Uh, public order, for example, that has been a change, the record of public order. So, um, it is being, it's around seventeen percent in, in Western Town Centre and, and in the Western Town Beats. This is a year-to-date, by the way, what I do is go over the last tactical period, three months. So it's twenty-third or twenty-second of November and I compare those to the previous three, this, sorry, previous years, same three month period. That's only because you can find your year-to-date figures online anyway, so if I just present those to you, so you could look on this, you can get those. This is a seasonally, it's like a seasonal, um, snapshot that I thought is more relevant to town council reasons. So I get, you might not have confidence in the statistics, so I wanted to give you something that gave you at least some confidence in our, um, sort of best approach, especially to shoplifting in the town. And that is the progress of our teams, our neighbour tasking team in particular over the last, actually, this is our last update of what's called our local priorities meeting, over two weeks, we have a local priorities meeting and our neighbour tasking team provide an account of what they have done. So this is two pages of activity that this team has had as well, and I, it's part of the uplift, the, the neighbourhood uplift they're talking about. And this is the team in the town centre and, and the Moscow Sunset, the doggy focus on the town centre. And you see, I've got me everything out, but three red, a red impact defender, by the way, they are our top political defenders in the town. And, um, I've got fellow vice-charged, reminded by another document, so you see, I've been X R C R. Um, but you will see arrested, charged, reminded on a number of these things. Uh, three men impact defenders out of mail for section eighteen assault. We did a practical shoplifting op where we got a, uh, a female for fourth theft and more possession of carse drugs. We did now in the same op, we had a male arrest drug, uh, drug tried in shop theft. Um, we also have here, same report, same period of time, uh, can a large number of shoplifting offences and they are all arrested, charged, reminded. We used to see a lot of arrests, investigation, couple of months later, charged, potentially bail to court. Uh, actually, what this team, what we are really focused on at the moment is identifying people who are prolific for shoplifting, making sure that they are, when they're arrested, that we go for a charge as best we can that day. We look to remind them to court the next day and then it sounds to the court, this is what they choose to do on a number of that, as you see our top one here, they've sentenced them then because of their history. Um, the big thing for us in that bottom of the line, six of our top shoplifters, shoplifting offenders have been reminded in the last tactical period by our neighbour tasking team or the local neighbour police team. And Joe Rippon, who is the relatively new sergeant, he's been in the town centre team, is, um, is ex-op remedy, which is effectively one of his neighbour tasking team officer comes from. And his mindset is target criminals, target those causing harm and let's get them arrested and, and dealt with. Um, we still practically work with, you know, try and support people, but there is a real dynamic feel to the way these teams are now operating. And, and I can go into more, but I just wanted to give you a summary of, of those, um, of those results that those sort of teams are getting, so there is a real, there's a real fear around trying to get hold of especially shoplifting offences. Uh, just kind of issues there, we just wanted to talk about, police tensions, there are, and there's graffiti, where a really relevant is causing a lot of concern around different parts of Weston. And there were hate crime stickers, I've talked about three, so there were very, no taking it rest, somebody searched, found others, other stickers, so the sticker issue was that, uh, we have been told from the blue reporting is not continuing. There are other issues, it's to graffiti work, the council to identify, council of fact, of a fantastic in, uh, noticing in Gurnell, getting that moved through, to identify, looks like that, the folks are getting, trying to identify people who are systematically going around, um, you know, causing offence. Um, and we do some work, just try and re, re inform our hate crime statistics are closely hours a day, they're closely under reported, so we're just trying to do some exercises just for listeners and find out what actually, whether again, those, that element of reporting wrong, um, and see what we can do just to get a better picture of some of the the offences that are presuming of, of the police attention that have been expensive for us. Um, for those of you, the summer streets initiative is continuing, it's the winter take streets initiative. Um, that's going to be accompanied by some of the law blitz, which is going to be a marked increase in allocated patrols for town centres and boothed crime areas. Uh, speaking of, Joe Pippen, the native sergeant, doesn't know yet, he's been allocated today, which is on Wednesday, so when he comes in on Monday, he will, uh, he'll see, he'll have to hear that, but he's going to be coordinating the systematic increase in patrols of officers in both plenty of those and people for to target, uh, shoplifters and target those causing harm for town centre. Uh, off school is this week, uh, we're looking at, and we have also as well, it was last week, so that's looking at drugs, uh, minor crime and private operations to target those, um, looking to deal, uh, to deal and to, uh, supply drugs is the area. Today, uh, the neighbour tasking team and our team are, I think, around about forty minutes, we're probably almost now after. And I've been custody now dealing with a carse by job. And on Artemis is a, is a very large operation, uh, looking at youth harm and exploitation, uh, across North Somerset, particularly drugs in Weston because of the nature of the, of the issues. But looking at specifically county lines and other lines and how they're exploiting young people. And not just, um, supporting those that are being exploited and looking to try and, uh, bring those that we are concerned about to notice if a variety of issues can provide support for them, but also trying to understand that. The, the trail of the line going up was, and looking at private drug operations to, uh, target, unless charged, remarked. It's quite a nice little phrase to keep going for, uh, but those people who are causing harm to, to children, particularly in North Somerset. So that, I know it's a little bit longer, I don't know if I have to please feedback, not necessarily right now, but let me know if that is best, uh, words, if you want something different, I want to make sure that what I give you around policing in the area is exactly what you want, uh, without you just listening to far carnival all night, so uh, if there's all you want, but there's different things you want to hear about, or even if as a town council, you are seeing updates, but I probably would just give you that sort of detail, obviously, and it would be probably quite detailed business crime focus given the difficulties we have. But I, I'm interested in trying to make this as useful for you as possible and give you stuff that, that, you know, you feel best difference to how you want to stop listening to that.
Okay, just questions, yeah, things. You're good.
Actually, firstly, uh, I gave a good bit of information, I understand you can't from a reach, but the fact, um, just on shoplifting. The supermarket, I mean, I've got six two miles around me now, two of them have no longer performed shoplifting. Now, last week, three people, fifteen hundred pounds perth, they tried that wing. There is a regular guy who goes in to save Chris Morrison and he's been stopped four times, but two of us. Now, that's not being reported, but I was trying to encourage him, saying, no, you should report it because I'm going, there's a problem. And if we don't, if we know it, we go elsewhere, like we start patting these people because that's a precision penalty, it's what.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
So that's, uh, so I'm going to encourage them. The other thing, do you think it's worth for members of this council to present a lot for us? Which is, uh, yeah, which more so that presentation, I, for, see, that's safety for members. Yeah, I'm grateful I do it for you next time.
Oh, thanks, yeah, that's great, I was, I was glad you were asking me to do that, I'm glad, something like that, yeah. Uh, but, you know, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'll, I'll, I'll say that away. Just on, um, we do have, uh, we have people who are really hit by shoplifting, it really affects them and they do support us. We have others who are either, um, who have given up the voting, absolutely get that and, and these sorts of messages and this sort of actions, sort of starting, we want to make sure it's put ahead of them so that they can see we are taking those seriously. There are also those who have their own, especially larger, quite frankly, their own procedures that do get in the way of being able to get information to everybody, so we have people have to go to regional offices to be able to get CCTV and that does come back, so there are a number of different challenges in relation to trying to tackle these type of crime. Um, just in terms of positive around that, the business group district now have changed the system that they're, or changing the system that they, they operate on. Uh, North Somerset council, although the data is. Uh North Somerset Council, all the data for that, we are able to access that as well, uh whilst we can't. Systematically put everything that's on there, what we are keen to do is whether we've got political offenders or people identified as causing harm. We will go into that system as well to try and make sure that we have everything that that person is doing. So we can hold them to account and get better call outcomes for those people that are hurting the town the most. So um we are trying to do that a bit more around those assist defenders and whilst I want to report everything individually. That conversation around who is causing the harm, if we can start with that, they can see us doing stuff around that, that might be better reporting. So I want to focus, you know, not like that, like I get some people work with whatever everything that's going on, and also there's a balance between commercial. Their commercial time, they don't spend on that, they don't spend all their time on the, you know, they could come to us, but if there's somebody causing harm, it's probably worth the time of us. And for them to to try and make sure that people, people get arrested, charged for murder there. How's working?
Cheers, thank you, and I should want to cast your mind back to the incident on the ninth with the suspicious package in town, the.
Yeah.
Uh the road proposed for about six hours, and I just wanted to know if you had any more clarification on how much money it costs. To send that bomb, Arsenal and Braver to Western, so I assume it's not sitting in Porthead or somewhere like that. And and the second question was, uh without sounding like a tabloid hat, um. Should the public be worried that there was no evacuation that took place if if the uh, you know, if it was a real threat? And and why were punters allowed to sit if many fires and three metres away? Take pictures of the whole ordeal or with nothing but the glass to protect them, and just wanted to know that.
Thank you, uh yeah, so the, it's a it's a military, it comes from, yeah, from the field, I think it takes a while, but okay, I don't know the cost. Of the military unit, I don't even know if I'd be able to find it, I don't know if I'd be able to find it out. Um there were, there were a couple of patients, so twenty twenty people were uh were asked to evacuate and um there were, there was a request. That turned into uh more than a request for really fast throws. So we ended up with a inspector closing the bar, but um that wasn't. They policing this into allowing to remain to stay there, in fact, what it turned into was. Uh they were the negotiation to make sure that they weren't there to go with it, so that was, that was, so. It's really difficult, so in the end, it was not a, it was not an exposed device, it was a suspicious package that turned out to be a couple of days. Uh taken together, but it didn't look like a suspicious package at that time. Um we absolutely get, there are people with violence, I was getting home over the call of the people with violence, I was wanting the same pub, I don't know yet, we had to. And we had to do these uh these processes where we initially ask, uh we asked with the consequence and then we then we tell. And in this case, we must probably add to tell and close that down, but yes, there was a period of time in one step, but they still sat there, not two of them.
Yeah, it's just something on, on on Facebook or the Facebook, it was, uh I think on Facebook of the raid, which you have talked about that for me, they wouldn't be enough.
So that was a real problem. Absolutely, uh it was, it caused a frustration for us as well. Um we we, I can only say it was made explicitly clear. Uh why we were asking, what I said, in the end, um a senior police officer, I this is. The account I thought, by the way, I was, it was better time, but a senior police officer has made a decision to make sure that they were not unable to stay there. I was all well.
Um thank you, thanks, Anthony, um. Just can I just ask you about the data issue, um so you've presented some data, you said. That there's a new way of calculating it, but then you also caveated that with a. But it might not be right and there are lots of reasons why we we might just get to pull the back naps a bit, and I think that's really true, isn't it? Certainly when you look at the shoplifting statistics, um. Even on your new, e- even your old system, it's it's particularly high in relation to what appears to be here at all two levels, um. So I'm just interested to understand how you can get more accurate information. Uh Agnes's state of um criminal activity in the town centre and across the across the board. Particularly given that evidence-led policing is so important now, data-led policing. So our ability to deploy resources in any in any given area and to respond is driven by the information you've got, and if it's not accurate or reliable. We've got a bit of a problem, so what can we do about that? Um and then secondly, you've talked about the targeted operations around shoplifting, which is really pleasing to hear about. And I know that you're coming to a meeting that we've organised on Thursday to talk about town centre and. Antisocial behaviour in the street community and some of those issues, but I'm just interested in in line with the winter safer streets operation. What is actually going to be done to improve the visibility of policing, we talked about this last time. Because there is no doubt that we've got actual crime going on and actual antisocial behaviour, but it's also got a real perception issue. Where businesses and visitors believe that it's not safe to come into the town centre, so my question is, what's your plan to tackle that?
Yeah, so um on the first issue around recording, um. The biggest thing I would like to see is consistency on you, what we're being asked to to record. Um that unfortunately is out of, that's beyond, that's beyond my um. My gift in terms of the expectations and environment and standards of environment going. So um the most important for me there is the communication we have, the bit now which is improving, but um. And uh whether the citizens are best, we have to find out someone actually, it's like in the same. Things I've I've had over conversations around A5, I've been told it's fastly underreported. Then uh I don't have the answer, or I haven't listened to try and work out what we need to do about. Any any specific issues, be the same around that, because in the absence of consistency, uh because we've gone to a point where we had relatively um. Low reporting, then uh a change in the system, it meant there's something a lot more and absolutely a lot less, so consistency is the issue, because we can't see trends. Um I don't know, but I'm not coming back, we need to come back to that, so then on the second. Uh oscillance is particularly something around visibility, so it's about the issue of visibility, so. Um I'm going to be speaking with Joe around how we implement that, but the idea will be there will be data allocated officers from across. Neighbourhoods and wider um to be present, um not just walking around sort of visible free, but dealing with. Issues in the town, that's in addition to our payment, which is a head office, initially funded patrols for officers. On um on over time each uh four and four of to be able to look at uh hospital policing patrols, so. You mentioned that they go around, they're normally walking around constantly, there's always two walk around in the street with with issues there, um. I will qualify again on today, the idea was we had a big proactive op within forty minutes, most of them were. Were dealt with, uh over committed because they dealt with a an issue, so some of those things will be um. The more we're arrested and the more we're being, bringing people into custody rather than people that are on the street, um the more. You know, time we're spending in custody, however, that's worth it, it's the main problems, I've been taken off the street during that time, so we're trying to bounce. Uh regular visibility, we're practically dealing and gets that, I think you go about a restaurant for massive, but actually obvious problems needs to be. Dealt with in custody and dealt with their own part of the months of dealing. So there is a balance around that will affect visibility, but it's a lot of police be there based on the issues, so off blitz, off Haven. And just hopefully, we're we're looking at, we're looking at new um beat managers over the coming. Uh couple of months, which is looking at, I'm going to be some others, because we're still. Uh we're the sort of manager for leasing action, I show our team, because we're still significantly down on where we should be in terms of vacancies.
Justice Williams.
Thank you, I will ask you about social behaviour, because we all get that conversation earlier. Um in light of the fact that tomorrow is the Sir Optus March, uh railing against abuse and working off this. Hence of again, the awareness around bands, for women and girls. I just wondered when you talked about whether we want to deep dive into something, I would be particularly interested in. Whether you could come back to us with data on how um effective these campaigns are for awareness. Are whether you feel that the reporting ones that women and girls suffer reflects the truth of the actual situation in society?
Uh absolutely, most of them to do so, I think it's something that's accepted, it's heavily underreported, um yeah, certainly I'm going to produce that for me. And in fact, if there was a, if there's a list of things in between now and then, and you did what, you know, would that be specifics around that or other things? So yeah, through yourselves, just let me know what 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 themes we'd like to cover, even if one of that chart is through the years, a bit of a theme through the year, whatever, whatever works for you.
Uh counsel call.
Um so yeah, I just wanted to kind of pick up on Charlie's. And I just wondered if there's some kind of formal procedure that we should give our officers, when there does, there is some kind of, yeah, um. It seems to me a little bit, yes, how we're evaluating on the day, um. Uh uh you know, I'm completely in that six hours, had been from what we've been quite easy, not all. And yet there were people still in the vast, the the south far seems to still be well, they're only maybe seeing bits that have been evacuated, so I was just wondering. If there's some kind of reassurance, you know, that maybe it came from seeing the speaker or developing.
I agree, and there's going to be brief. And I would hope that futures consider that nature, and and it's really, you know. It's the same, well, we've had recently some messages that have have been uh thrown out to organisations that cause some concern. Um and I absolutely get, in the main, everyone goes out, won't be. Um but if we make the decision that it could be, then we have to do everything within the protocol that says. We are treating this as it is until such time as it isn't, um and it was quite a learning to be taken from that instead of the. I would hope it would be improved, should anything like that, it's very rare, or should anything like that happen again. Um you know, they are, they are okay, most supportive place and really service before.
Captain Williams.
Thank you, um I think councillor Bell's time has been the point, um I wanted to query. The um police presence in the centre where we've recently had. Scouts of us in perception, but also we have had um a degree of antisocial behaviour, five, five shops or windows smashed. Um has there, has there been any firework from that and will there be progress in these places as soon as I've got that?
Yeah, yeah, so we're trying to say, um I suppose, yeah, so we are the in place. Off blitz, we're all at points to call the nearby resources that we can manage just within the town centre team itself. So the whole point is across all sunset, um and anyway, we're also finding the tasking team, we're going to be allocating. Um daily patrols into the town centre, uh purely for that purpose, to to not just reassure people on that, but also to make sure that we are. Consistently targeting people we know who are affecting the town centre, doing what we can to practically police them. Um either the way or into our centre recommendation.
Thank you, that was very helpful, and I think you can hear us on the last person.
Yeah.
Okay, uh moving on, got some of the procedures to proceed to improve town orders, um that's a good. Yeah, that's a very, that's a new part.
Mr. Lane, I just asked town park, could you clarify very quickly, page thirty four, twenty six point one, and the. And the same in the past, I just didn't understand that paragraph, but I'll read it there, I'd help with you clarify it then.
It's fifty three in the pack, but thirty four on natural, so it's.
Uh twenty six point one.
So yeah, this is around casting of cancers, of castle, you know, it's good to see treasures all interacted, so it's not, we aren't supposed to be a favorite of the cast, we should just qualify the casting. So you know, our chance.
Do you mean as if I can just sort of base sort of the chairman of Roma, if you say, is that what you mean?
I'll be there, it's a lot of interest.
Okay, so this for now, Shane, um the rate visit Western. Uh to see the report of the seemingly well-off uh group vision from the ultra danger community, and was the number of twenty five.
Yep.
So this is coming from the E T S who received the um cells, human cells, um the super website. Um recent standing town council is the home website, where we'll finish on thirty first of March and need to close the order. Uh ahead of March, so there is no like if one website transfers to another one, so it's a different chapter. Uh we have a foundation for our E T's change in factors, um and that's why I sent you to the group and I should allow it to be made.
Questions?
No, anyone who's asked, I'm sure, uh that's for, uh, same. You tell it, I don't ask for you. Was I here, I was, was I here? All this is a favor. And against, they have pensions, that's all that's. Okay, I listen to the night, it's armed forces council, to see before the city officer, through motivation, confinement. And they're all posted currently, have a failure from three hundred and five. Uh also, has to be over again.
And that, yeah, I just wanted to say a few words as I am the armed forces champion. And to say how pleased I'm to recommend that we adopt this standard over the armed forces, which for Western Super and Town Council. It's a national pledge, it's an undertaking that those who serve or have served in armed forces and their families. To be treated with fairness, dignity and respect, is built on two core principles. First, that no member of the armed forces community should face a disadvantage due to access, commercial or public services, and second, special consideration might be appropriate. But always to give them the most, such as the injured or the impaired. So for many years, we were signatures to the joint North Somerset Council, uh which was adopted in two thousand and thirteen. But now, because of the actions from North Somerset Council, it is. Situations that we we've encouraged as a parish council, or a town council, I should say, to adopt our own. So in response, a draft happens specific to Western Super Mayor. Which aligns with all the national principles and recognizes our local circumstances and commitments. It's important, I need to emphasise here, that this is not just a procedural thing or a symbolic gesture. Western Super Mayor has deep and longstanding relationships with the military, woven into our history and our community identity. Our town was held to the RAF, Western Super Mayor, in the nineteen thirties and was active throughout the Second World War and beyond. He stationed in a vital role in training, technical operations and hosted the Polish Air Force Staff Voyage during the latter stages of the war. Nearby RAF lobby also had a profound influence on the life of our town, and there are many who still remember when it was active. Um and many who regretfully. They closed, um and of course, it's remembered about the housing development that occupies so much of the town. And it's a testament, I think, all of these things are so well remembered, that there is this strong bond between that piece and our community. Not just that, Western contributed directly to the war effort, aircraft manufacturing engineering took place there and burnback here was used for important military research and testing. Including early trials to help to promote development of famous fancy bomb. Our town hosted American troops preparing for D-Day, I think there's even a blue plaque from the town council to. General Eisenhower is the member of this group appearance of Western. And Western even enjoy Bobby Ray's at that lasting scars here. We remember that commitment every year at the remembrance ceremony that we take to our party. Uh Royal British National Western Super Mayor has been and continues to be dedicated in its work supporting veterans, families and cadets. And today, our military heritage remains as a lie through events that we host. So these connections, for me, are not distant memories, they're part of the story of our town, part of our civic identity. And part of our continuing responsibility towards the service community. and part of our continuing responsibility towards the service community living on our master day. By adopting this covenant, Western Town Council reaffirms this long-held commitment. It will strengthen our partnerships with local military representatives, veterans organisations, schools and youth groups, and will enable us to fully participate in national initiatives, and importantly, allow the council to apply for defence, employ employer recognition speed. So I'm really pleased that my finance and general process committee recommends to me adopt this and I hold hard in part to support this recommendation as your Armed Forces Champion. It is meaningful and timely, and so I hope you will all agree with me for this, thank you.
Castle, you're the CEO, that's the role of it. And before you do that, would you please make sure that the certificate itself is actually up to date and does bear the King's Crown on the Ministry of Defence, the King's Crown on the Armed Forces Covenant, rather than the Queen's Crown. And so, uh, general proposal, captain, a second up, absolutely, and all is in favour. Any against, or any exceptions, I think that's passed. Um, I believe that is the basis, so no further business, I have a presentation, both, thank you, gentlemen, I'll see you later.